Good evening and welcome to the Wilson's Special School District Board of Education Meeting for Tuesday, February 27, 2024. My name is Tim Carter, I'm Superintendent of Schools. As I usually mention at the beginning of every board meeting, if you're in person, there will be a public comment at the end of the board meeting. And if you're not here, you are certainly welcome to call the school district at 716-751-9399 and get your comment, question or concern to Mrs. Valan who will relate to the board. At this time, in lieu of the pledge of allegiance, we're going to have Mrs. Andres and our high school choir sing the National Anthem. If you please stand.
(Singing) Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous night? For the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? Gave proof through the night that our flag was still there? O, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave? For the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Board members, I'm Mrs. Andres and possibly we're going to talk a little bit about their upcoming possible field trip that's on the board agenda to be approved.
And I apologize, being incredibly old, it was always traditional that we had to come and run the board and present. So it's not actually on there because I don't know if we had to. We're going to be going May 4th and 5th, Saturday, Sunday, to Cedar Point. We all have our itinerary and everything. We'll be competing, spending a little time at Cedar Point, staying in a hotel with a pool in breakfast. It was requested. And then we're going to the Convenium and then we're going to Fredonia College for heightened St. Cecilia mass. So it's orchestra and chorus. We kind of get both. And we should be back by 8:00 o'clock Sunday night. Nick, just go ahead and say a little.
I just wanted to thank the board personally while I had the opportunity for being able to send my peers to Ball State, both area and conference for the past few years. It's been a wonderful experience for us all and I can't thank you guys enough for putting that.
Thank you. And do you have any questions about this competition trip? Yes. Okay.
Are you going to be escorting me taking roller coasters or just watching?
Well, me? I went on a roller coaster after my fourth child was born and that was the end. But they can as long as they're legal. A couple of them are short. Okay, guys, you are good.
Thank you.
You guys have some luck. Have a good time.
Thank you.
Board members, item one, the agreement that is stated February 13, 2024. Command motion? Second. Any questions? Call on favor. Aye. Opposed? Motion parrot. We have a number of special presentations. Mrs. Oliveri for the first one.
Tonight, if you were with us in January, I did the revenue side of the budget and tonight we're going to talk about the expenditure side expected for next year. Mrs. Valan, yes, you can go into. So how we usually talk about expenditures is in functions and you'll see up there that functions are salaries, benefits, BOSI's contractual and down there. So we don't go line by line. There's 800 and something lines to the budget, so we kind of lump them into big sums and we talk about the big changes that we see coming. So for salaries, you can see the total of $12,295,147. I would think that you might say, wow, you're only saying that's $44,000 increase. That doesn't seem like very much. It isn't. Typically, it is around $200,000, $250,000 when we do this, but at the end of last year, there were some retirements that were not in the budget when we did the budget. The hard thing you got to think about is I'm doing the budget right now for quite a while from now. So we're making estimates and estimating things that aren't even going to happen until September, you know? So sometimes we know about things, sometimes we don't. So we did have some late retirements and with that, what that means is I had those people on the budget at their salary and then they decided that they were retiring by June 30. So in many cases, we hire a new person, but their salary is significantly less. So what we call that is there's a breakage. So that breakage was not calculated into the budget at this time last year. So if you have three teachers that retire that you didn't calculate into the budget, that can be about $180,000. So that's the reason you're not seeing a big increase. I also, we also have two teachers that we know have already put in their retirement for this coming June and I have calculated that breakage into the budget already. So that's about $300,000 right there of difference. So I just wanted to make sure that you understood that because next year you're probably going to see a much different number, although next year we do have a lot of potential retirements that we're going to talk about. So the retirements do play into what you see on that line from year to year. Benefits. What entails in benefits, you probably all know health insurance. The consortium has agreed to a 3% increase for next year. The TRS and ERS, that's our teachers and our staff's retirement. Both of those rates are going up for next year, so we have to calculate that, that change into the budget. Dental, we do not have a new contract yet, so I am working on that. And social security and Medicare, of course, we pay based on the total number of salary dollars that we have for that year. One of the bigger items in the benefit category that I'm budgeting for next year is the employee benefit payout. And like I just mentioned, we do have about nine teachers that are eligible for the retirement incentive in the teacher's contract. So if all nine were to retire, that would be a big payout the district will owe them. So I am increasing that line by quite a bit for next year because I have to be prepared. So that is one item that board members, it's something that you need to be aware of and also I think, think of it as like a one-time possible payment. So if we are short, sometimes those one-time things aren't a bad thing to use reserves for if we need them. BOSI's costs, there's a lot of things, services, software. Some of our students go to BOSI's for occupational and some of our students go to school there full-time. So that BOSI's line incorporates quite a lot of different costs. One of the biggest is the kids that do go to school there full-time. And as of right now, we do have an increase of about $120,000 expected for next year, but later on in this meeting, you're going to hear a presentation about some 1211 opportunities that we might be bringing back to district that could save us potentially some expenses. So we'll hear more about that, but right now I have everybody that we are expecting will need services from BOSI's budgeted into the budget. So if you do decide to make changes based on what the other presentations are tonight, I might be having to give you some updated numbers. Debt, debt is, oh, I'm sorry, contractual. Contractual is anything we pay for services that we might need and also includes mileage for people going to different events. And that has stayed relatively flat, a $59,000 increase. One of the big items for contractual is we are contracting occupational therapy now. I think you're all aware, we needed some extra help over at the elementary schools, so I have budgeted an increase for that for next year. Debt, that is what we pay as principal and interest for our bonds for our capital project work. We are expecting an increase in that next year. We are expecting to ban money for the capital project this July and those payments would be due the following June. So we will have a principal and interest payment on that ban. Utilities, as you can see, I've lowered that total expected for next year. This time last year, we were climbing quite fast with utility costs, so I had increased that for this year, 23, 24. But luckily for all of us, that's kind of leveled off a little bit, so I'm not expecting such a big increase. And I think that based on what I have, I can lower slightly, so I am lowering that a little. Materials, that equipment, it's down a little. To me, that's kind of flat, you know, it's pretty much similar. Those are the materials we use for our instructional lines, for our cleaning department, for my business office supplies we might need. Equipment is mostly carried through the facilities and the athletic office, carries the bulk of the equipment money for things that they need. And it's basically relatively the same right now, but make any changes, I'll certainly let you know. Transportation, I have down a little bit. As you know, we try to do as much as we can with least amount of buses as possible. So luckily, we have had some decline in the buses needed to take our kids out of district, so that's been helping with the driver shortage. That's the real problem that we have. So I have been rightsizing that budget for a couple of years now and luckily, we've been lucky enough to be able to move that down. Transfers are just the money that we set aside for the capital outlet project. We've been trying to do one of those every year where we get the money, 80% of the money back from the state and it helps us do a little bit of capital improvement throughout the district. We will have more details on what we're going to do or propose to do with that coming probably the next meeting. And we also have to pay 20% of our kids that go to extended school day. So those are kids that go out of district in the summer to prevent learning loss, so we do have to pay for 20% of that. So the total, you can see 29,493,130. There's only a $286,000 increase year to year, which is less than 1%. So right now, this proposed budget is quite a small increase as has been from the previous few years, but we're hoping that we can make do with that because, as you know, I presented on the revenue side, last month and we're down on the revenue side. So we are really trying to tighten the belts a little bit and making sure we're checking each expense and what exactly do we need in those lines. So I used to scrap last year. The only reason I put this on is I want you to see that overall, we're very stable. Our expenditures in those categories stays very consistent year to year. And I think, I think as a budget person, that's important for me to see. You don't want to see these big spikes and moving around and what's going on. So we're very consistent, very stable and I think that we're present that we are in a good financial position. So I know this is kind of small, but it's basically everything that I just talked about in terms of expenditures. So this is mostly for the website for people to look at later. We don't have to go over this line by line. It's basically the function categories and what's the big changer in that function for next year. The next slide shows, so how do we look right now? So if you remember the revenue side, you know, we were down on the foundation aid quite a bit and we're hoping, you know, that the legislature turns then around for us and for most districts in the state. So right now, we are predicting a deficit of 681,000, I would say 700,000. That means that the expenditures right now, as I have calculated, exceed the revenue expected. So what do we do at this point? I continue to work on the budget every day, looking at codes, looking at numbers, trying to make the best estimates that we can. Where can we pin share? What can we change? Do we really need that there? Things like that. I work with the admin team to help make those decisions, the superintendent, of course. I will keep presenting changes to the board through their notes. And we'll keep an eye on the legislature and see what comes out of those one-house budgets that should be coming out pretty soon. Everything that I see, they present to us, shows us with that foundation aid increase because technically that's the law and the governor has changed how she presented that to us this year. So hopefully, the legislature will follow the law and continue to hold us harmless, which means we would get the same foundation aid that we got last year. If that happened, we would only be in about a deficit of 162,000. So that's much more feasible to work with without tapping into our savings, you know? But if we remained at the 700,000, I would think that we might have to do some one-time use of some of our savings. So that's everything that I have. You might have questions for me, board? Yes, the staff that I have in there, I know I wasn't here when you met last time, but Superintendent Carter did tell me you wanted those grant-funded positions in the budget and they are in there.
So they're calculated in that maybe of 681,000. All positions current level. And we'll see what the legislature gets, the legislature does for us. Any questions, board members? Thank you. Mrs. Oliveri, I noticed the budget season's the hardest because you can't really predict what's going to happen. And then we have to make a vote in April and we still may not know what's going to happen, but hopefully they're going to make some, quickly come up with their one-house budget. I've asked Amanda Tausen, our Director of Special Ed, and Jason Wilkie, our Elementary Principal, to take a moment and present to us an idea that they presented to Mrs. Oliveri and myself in that leadership meeting to hopefully do two things. Service our students that are in district better, to service some of our students that were sending away, and also some of our students that are on waitlist waiting for response. So I'm going to let them talk a little bit and then give you guys a chance to ask any questions.
All right, so thank you everyone for the time. We appreciate it. The first thing that I just want to go over is our current level programming for special education services that we offer at MS. So we offer two models for students if they're identified through the community special education, that they need additional support based on learning disability or any other classifications for an IEP. So we have a consultant teacher model, which means a certified special ed teacher pushes into a general education classroom for a specific number of minutes and they support the students and help them meet the accommodation set toward on the IEP. The most typical thing that looks like is going into math class for about 45 minutes and going into ELA class for about 45 minutes and that's the most support that the students get throughout the day. The other model that we have is called integrated co-teaching or it's more of it as ICT. And that is two teachers in the same classroom all day long. One of them is general education, another is special ed certified, and they both cooperate to service the students with IEPs. And really what that model looks like is you really don't even tell who's the general ed teacher, who's the special ed teacher. They are both working together and working with all the students in the room. There's no limit to the number of students that can be in that class total. There is a limit of 12 students with IEPs that can go within from the classroom. And the best practice, even though it's on a rule, is about 50%, so if you had 12 kids with IEPs in there, you would want more than 20% of students in the class. So right now, as of today, that is the only two models that we have at MS for students who are going to get classified with learning disability. So a problem that we identified and has been very evident pretty much since the first day of school this year is we have students in the integrated co-teaching setting that are not appropriate for that setting. When I say not appropriate, it means that their either academic needs or management needs are much higher than their classroom peers and more than is reasonable for the general ed teacher and the special ed teacher to accommodate in that setting. So, and I pulled this right from NICE, so it is best practice for the students to be in a restrictive environment, so that means we want them as close to their general education peers as possible. However, students with the IEPs in the ICT setting should have similar needs to their peers, the other kids with IEPs, and the ability to help them should not impact the students without IEPs in the classroom. Everything should be able to exist in one setting with everyone getting what they need. And it needs to be basically reasonable for the special ed teacher to be able to provide the curriculum for the students to meet the needs to learn the general education curriculum. So for example, a fourth or fifth grader reading at a kindergarten level, it is not reasonable that they will have access to the fourth or fifth grade curriculum where they're only reading at a kindergarten level. But you know, you can't teach kindergarten and grade at the same time in the classroom or it leads to students having to get pulled constantly away from their grade or their classroom peers in order to achieve that. So that's the problem that we identified. So the solution to this problem is to adding what's called 1201 classrooms. So the classification through the special ed regulation is called a special class setting. So that means that it's a special class consisting of students with disabilities who have been grouped together based on similar individual needs. There can be a maximum of 12 students in this class and there's a full-time special education teacher and there's a full-time teacher's aide in this room. And these students are grouped together, not necessarily by grade level, but by their age, and there's a 36-month range for each. So typically what it looks like, for example, is kindergarten through second grade students, third grade to fifth grade students, but in the middle there, there's a little variation if you have an older second grader or younger third grader. But the students are put in this classroom because they have similar needs. So whether they're a third, fourth, or fifth grader, they might be reading at a kindergarten level and so they're all going to be able to get that instruction in this classroom without impacting the other students in the current seating setting. A lot of benefits to this that we noticed, first of all, offer those flexibility in placing students. So that comes into play a lot, especially when students move from out of district or students come out of home school or coming off pre-k and we don't have the information on them until it's too late and school's dirty and we need to place them and if they need this type of setting like this year, for example, we didn't have. So that either leads to them being in a setting that's not appropriate or us trying to send these kids to an out-of-district placement. So it gives flexibility. It ends up being more support for all students because if you take these students with the highest needs and put them in a classroom that where they get the appropriate support for them, then they're also offering more support to the students that are in the consultant teacher and the ICT model that applies appropriately because those teachers' times won't be spent as if they're foundations for the students in the appropriate place. Bringing kids back home that are out of district or preventing that, so that's a really hard conversation to have with parents because first of all, it's hard enough sometimes for a parent to hear that their student needs an IEP and then to say that they need to be in a class potentially away from their general education peers. And then to say, by the way, just school's also going to be a half off of it. That's really hard for parents to swallow and we want these kids here. There's no reason for them not to be here. They're not safety hazards or anything like that. So we're able to say, we have this class, it's going to be best for your student and they're going to be our dump hall. They can still go to their specials with their grade level peers, into the left with their grade level peers, recess with their grade level peers. So it's still socially, it's more appropriate. And then based on numbers, it is cost savings. I'm going to let Ms. Tomlin go ahead.
Yes, so I'm going to go into the cost savings part. So we grouped it as two classrooms for the self-mutiny 1211 and we identified it as the older students and the younger students, mostly on the fact that like Mr. Wilkie said, some of the grades don't perfectly line up, so we have that 36 months. So we looked at what would be the older students' class. So right now, we have two potential students that we would be able to bring back for BOSI's. We spoke with families about this possibility and that would give us a cost savings because BOSI's program is going up in terms of costs and then we're able to bring them back. So bringing back those two students could save us $188,388.42. So that would be savings on those two students. Because of this classroom being created, for this classroom specifically, we would need a teacher's aide to be hired. So there is a cost for that, which would be $49,254. So if you take the two of those numbers, it would still, that would be a debt, if they did have the family insurance, Ms. Oliveri did capture that and that would be the most cost that would be needed. So we would gather that savings of $59,134.42, including the cost of needing, just based on those two students.
The board members, that doesn't include, we have kids that are waiting list for these positions. They're not paying for them though. We would have to pay for them next year. We won't if we're in this house. We have students in the house that would be going out next year because we don't have these particular programs.
Yes, that is true. So that is the savings for the older class. Let's put into effect that there is also some savings for the second class. So we identified it as the younger student class. Two, currently with the setup that we have, there would need to be a teacher and a aide hired for that. So Ms. Oliveri again used the family insurance model to incorporate what the cost would be. For this classroom specifically, we have a student that we are looking to bring back from private placement for this classroom. And then we do have three potential kindergartners that were identified as CPSC right now that management needs quite hot and most likely won't be in an out-of-district placement for next year. So we would be saving those three students' costs of going out of district. So this would also gather savings of $38,455 just on this classroom, even with hiring both the teacher and an aide, which would be that savings as well. So and then our last slide, like Mr. Carter, we just talked about this, these classrooms, based on the current recommendations that are being proposed for the annual review season this year, there are three other students from West that would need to be referred out, like Mr. Wilkie said, that are not right now meeting the model that we have. So we have two students in the K2 and one student in the 35 that would need to also go out. So as Ms. Oliveri said, the BOSI's cost has gone up considerably and those are three potential students that have been referred out and are waiting on the waitlist or would need to be if this model does not change. It also gives us the option of having availability, the student moves in. So like Mr. Wilkie said, we did have a student who went in the fall that was, that needed to be in a smaller classroom, but we did not have the availability for them, so we had to refer them out. So this will give us an option within district for movements that that would be, you know, potential savings moving forward because we will have somewhere for the student that is in appropriate placement without having to seek outside agencies or BOSI's for those options.
Board members, any questions?
Just clarification, so we're looking at two classrooms.
Two classrooms. Yeah, for, to get one classroom, we would at least need an additional aide to do, but we have the teaching staff that we can make work to get two classrooms. We would need a teacher in two weeks' time.
Sure, okay. And these classroom, are they going to accommodate 12 children in these classrooms?
Yes.
And we're not, so based on what we have right now, we would only need the two?
Yes, currently with the recommendations that we have from the teachers, that's been something that's been worked on throughout the past couple of months and what are the needs for the students moving forward, this is what's being identified is what is happening.
Any of the special education needs change in next year's coming up? It would be taking students that are in a different setting and new rooms or say we identified in a couple of years we need a third room, that we'd be able to use this amount of staff because we'd be taking kids out of the ICT and CT programming. So I don't think we would ever need more than two, or at least, or why? Because based on the kids we have in school right now.
And the other potential benefit, it goes to the feeder program for the new school because it currently has 1211 and it allows us to identify certain students. The class currently has 12-1-1. It allows us to identify certain students to be able to move to the middle school, which that program will still grow. And eventually, there will be the need for the high school. Because we do have kids at the high school that are not in district. Have you got a question for the other?
Sorry to mention this, but do you, did you say we already have students in the BOSI's program that you can bring back?
Yes.
Okay, and then there's a few next year that would go there. Okay, so have you already spoken to the parents that are in the BOSI's program? And they do want to come back?
They do, yes. We did, yeah, we did have conversations with multiple families regarding that. And some families at this time are not ready to have the students come back. But these two parents have identified and want to come back and slightly, in fact, to have their children join. So those are, those are two parents or two families that confirmed. We did have a couple that did not, but these are confirmed families.
And this time did I went to visit these students in their current setting to make sure that they were appropriate to come back to the school building? Same with the kids that are slated for kindergarten. We saw some of those kids that are already in the program. So we put eyes on them to make sure it's good for that population.
And they, not only will they have the commitment, but they recommend, it's a recommendation from the current school they're in.
It is, yes.
They're ready to come back.
Yes, it is, it is a recommendation from their current schools that they're, they have utilized what their program can provide and they're ready for it. So I mean, that is a last resort, if something's happening.
Do we have room four?
I have a big room.
We're sort of tight at the elementary school.
We are tight, and if we are able to have these two rooms, that will, there's nowhere left. But I have a plan, I have the map drawn out, but I'm ready for it, but we can get it. But yes, it is tight, but we'll make it happen. So getting this program is more important than having the luxury of a little extra space because our kids need this program, so it would happen.
Any concerns, board members?
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Just a historic speaking. This is a question for Tim as well, or Super Tim Carter's room, excuse me. Have we had a 12-1-1 or just a room of that nature at the elementary level before in district?
Yes.
Okay, so this isn't something that we are coming in cold?
No, we had two. We had a primary and intermediate. You know, this was much prior to COVID.
Right.
Not using that as the excuse, but our needs have changed. The numbers just went down in most classrooms. And it was recommended that we move away from the 12-1-1 and do integrated co-teaching. We didn't have that model. The needs of the kids were not as drastic. We've found that gradually over the last two or three years, the needs of the students, both educationally and behavior management-wise, are increasing. So, you know, instead of continuing to send these kids out of district, it makes more sense to recreate that program here. So I would say about the last four years, we haven't. When I first started, we had a 12-1-1 intermediate, a 12-1-1 primary for the first two years. And then we went to the integrated co-teaching model. But the behavior and academic needs of our students are much more now. The need to move to this model is recommended.
I mean, that makes complete sense. I mean, we're a smaller district. I'd be a little assertive. We weren't adapting to the changing needs of the population. But just wanted to make sure that we had some experience at a district level with this sort of thing in the past.
And we have, even at the high school, we had a 12-1-1 at a high school level. Those kids were aging out and a number of students were doing well. We had four or five at the time. We had a retirement, and it just made more sense. We have, even at the high school, we still have older ones out for one year. The students are aging out, starting with the students who are, who are going to be suffering. My time and retirement, so we just have, even at the place that we're at, older ones out. We should get, we should see the needs go any lower. I think it's going to be a few years before we see a, you know, situation where the needs of the students are going to get any less. So thank you.
I have a quick question. How do you feel the integrated co-teaching model has worked? I mean, we've had that for a few years now. Do you, do you see any benefits to it or, I don't see a, it's a product coming out of that.
Yeah, I do think that there's a lot of benefits to it. We use the integrated co-teaching model as well in the middle school setting. And there is, for students that are appropriately set, that model is very effective. Adding two teachers available, especially I believe in the younger grades, where some of those deficits are easier to address. And it's always better to have those addressed when students are younger. So the integrated co-teaching does, is an effective model. Mr. Wilkie and I have observed teachers very effectively working together to address the students' needs. You cannot tell, you know, it's very seamless between who's a special education teacher and who's a general education teacher. And the students do have growth that is happening. Though like Mr. Carter said, unfortunately, some of the deficits, especially as we're moving through students that have had those learning gaps for those multiple years, are just increasing. So it is the integrated co-teaching model, while it is great for students that are in those levels, it's just not enough right now. But we are seeing effectiveness from that. And we have students that are in the integrated co-teaching that are able to step down into co-teaching. So they do not require that level of support originally that was needed. And they're able to be at needed this year. We do have students that have been able to, for next year, that are going to move into the co-teaching model because of that. So we are seeing effectiveness.
And I would anticipate if these programs happened, that we would actually start to see even more success out of the ICT model because the students that are not appropriately placed would not be there. And so the teachers will be able to provide even more support to students who are appropriately placed. And so I think we'd see an increase in their success, if we had everything kind of left out here.
Thank you.
Go ahead. I just want some clarity with this. Factor it into Ms. Alberi's budget?
No, okay. So that, actually, thank you. That led me into my next statement. I kind of need a little bit of consensus to help the direction. Because what has to happen, if we're going to move in this direction, we're going to have to send a resolution, pass a resolution to increase our special ed staff at elementary school by one student, one teacher and two aides. So it'll be two separate resolutions to rebrand that program. But I already have probably for one of the two teachers to be able to run that program. And then we would have to give Mrs. Alberi time to tweak the budget. So, can I hear any kind of consensus on moving forward with this?
With the savings that they talked about generating, cover the new costs. They talked about the $59,000 something and the $38,400 savings by going with this.
Yeah, you, we would lower the special ed budget by that amount, by those two amounts.
Again, we're going to raise it back up by hiring another special ed teacher, correct?
That's, that's included in there, yes.
That's savings after the hiring.
After the hiring, okay.
Is there consensus board?
I don't think so.
Nice one, Chris. So we'll bring those resolutions to the next board meeting for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you. So next up, I have Amy Sealy, our AIS and curriculum facilitators, going to talk a little bit about the WIN Learning Center. So over the last few years, Mrs. Sealy, the staff at the elementary school, the elementary principal, current and past, have been slowly tweaking the elementary AIS program. And this year, turned it into the WIN program, which is what I need. Not just academic intervention, but finding what the student needs to be successful. And that's kind of got us on a search for doing something similar at the high school, middle school. And this creation of the WIN Learning Center is what that, the product of that. And I'll let you go ahead and talk a little bit about it.
Thank you. So again, also, we are required to provide academic intervention services for students who fall in the area of need. And this is an option as well, if, depending on the budget, if we are no longer able to have our middle, high school AIS teachers available. So what I did is I wanted to show you in the next slide what currently we have. So the plan that we have currently in sixth grade, what we have, check if you just click on that. Okay, so what we have in sixth grade is similar to what we have in the elementary school. We kind of carry that through. We have open program, which is what I need. So home run teachers and special education teachers have a forty-minute period with students. And during that time, it's all at the same time during the day. And they all are paying services for what they need. It's like an academic support period with the special education teachers. And with the home run teachers, it is, if a student needs help in math, if they need help in ELA, if they need help in science, if they need help in social studies, they're giving that time with, they can go to that teacher to get that help. The only negative to that is it is during a chorus and band period as well. So students that go out of band or students that go out for chorus may not be getting that service during that time. For the seventh and eighth grade currently, we have a math and ELA teacher. And this is a grant-funded math and ELA teacher. We have students assigned based on testing, classroom performance, attendance, and recommendation. It is opposite a study hall. This is something that the certification comes to parents. We also reevaluate students every five to 10 weeks to see if they're making progress, if they still need to stay in this program. We monitor them very, we monitor them quite a lot. The only issue with this is that we do, it is just ELA and math. It's not covering social studies and science. However, our teacher does cover those areas if students need it. It's just not that specific to that subject. In grades nine through 12, it's a little bit different. We are, have, we've asked classroom teachers to cover this as one of their, planned for as one of their teaching periods. Students are still assigned based on testing, how they did on the regions, classroom performance, attendance, and also teacher per council recommendation. Available teachers are assigned. The only caveat, the negative to this is that the time when this AIS teacher is available and then the students during this time that need to be placed with that AIS teacher, it may not be in the subject area that that student needs help. You may have an English teacher, but the student needs help in chemistry. So you can see there's a little, it's not very balanced that way. Also, we're, one thing that we're finding that we have major issues with is that we don't have, our ninth grade students do not have a study hall. So in order for this to work effectively, we need to have a time period where our ninth grade students can go get help. And right now, it's talk period after school, and we all know, not everyone wants to say after school. So, but we try to do is come up with a way to, how can we change this? And how can we fix this? So if we go to next year, sixth grade would stay the same. So that would stay the same, the plan and proposal that we have is for grades seven through 12. But the proposal that I'm going to, it's not going to show it up there, but it's going to show you what's going to happen if nothing changes, if we just go forward without this learning center. So grades seven and eight, you'll see that we may not have the grant-funded math and ELA teacher, so that would be taken away. So we would then have to rearrange it and somehow find out someone, seventh and eighth grade teachers to fill in that gap. And it would only be a teacher that would be available during what our time period is. And it may not be except the students who pass. So again, it would be the same issue that the high school faces. And then it would be the same thing that for the high school. Again, it's what were the negatives to begin with. So the proposal was to look at this model, which is the Learning Center, which we got this idea from Louport. Louport has what is called the Lancer Learning Center. And the Lancer Learning Center, we kind of adopted it. It's basically what the WIN Learning Center would be, would be a learning lab type of environment where students with academic intervention needs would be placed. In addition, students who need a quiet space to complete homework or get additional help with a specific assignment can sign in from a study hall or a lunch. So this would be, any period of the day, this lab will always be available to students. It would be in its own separate room. Teacher would be assigned during that time, or during the time that they're available. Kids, students would know when those teachers were available. They could go get help. They could get help during school day. They could get help after school. And this would be where all the teachers would be in one spot. I, the when, when I saw it and when I went to go observe, it reminded me very much of like a tutoring center, like a college tutoring center. So you would go in and some kids just went there and worked quietly because sometimes the study halls are larger, sometimes it's more social, and that's okay. Some kids don't want that. Some want to go to a place where they can get their work done quietly. So there's that option as well. Okay, so these are just some pictures of the Lancer Learning Center. You can see that there are white tables where teachers would work at these whiteboard tables where they could do math problems. And there's also some different sitting options or seating options for students, more comfortable. They had, you know, moving desks and which are, who wouldn't necessarily need to do all of that. It also is a great place where teachers can send students to take tests. Oftentimes, you need to ask students to stay after school to take a test. Well, this would be, a teacher would arrange with the person in charge to have students go there to take a test if they needed to. So they didn't, they could go leave the classroom, take a test, come back in. And so that, our lunches are only 20 minutes. So lunchtime wouldn't necessarily be a ton of time, but it also would just be if the students having, struggling on a question, they could go in and ask a question for that time frame. So what would this entail? Who would be helping the students? There would be a director. Ideally, a director would need to be assigned responsibility for the winning center. The director would plan and create opportunities for review based on the students' needs. So again, you would still need to assign students to this room. And right now, the top need a max of maybe five students per class period, five to six, depending. And so they would need to plan and create what the students' needs are, where do they need help? They would be communicating with, they would be the communicator between the AIS teachers, the teachers that are coming into the classroom to help that director. They would also need to communicate with the students and parents and classroom teachers. The teachers that would be coming in would be our teachers that are available during that time. Right now, we currently have English teachers, science teachers, math teachers, and a social studies teacher. I mean, not this year, we have five schools of social studies. But they have their AIS classrooms. Instead of having them in their room, they would come to this classroom and just be available. If a student has a question in math, that person would be available to help them with a math question. We would ideally like to have math, social, science there. Also, the director, we would like to have, you know, if we need a math background. Our math and science really seem to be where our students struggle and need that help. So that would be nice. So the teachers that come in, obviously, they would be there to help with that specific content area. And then our tutors. One thing about the Lancer Learning Center that was really neat is that they have students from the National Society come in. And they would do present, or they would tutor students that needed it during lunch, after school. They also worked with local colleges and TRAC and U. And students that needed to get their observation or they were going for teaching. The director worked with them to come in and they could use some of those hours and they're helping students also, to also, you know, get hours and help our students as well. So that's the idea of the Learning Center.
A couple of quick things. The dollar amount for the directors already included into that budget presentation that Carolyn just did, talking about that last time. You know, the dollar amount set aside for working on the positions. How we go about filling that position is, you know, a leadership decision. We'll have that conversation, you know, if it's okay with moving forward. We can reach out to a particular staff member to see if they're interested in the work with the association, similar to what we've done with the AIS curriculum facilitator position. Our technology facilitator, we'll put someone special. we'll put someone on special assignment, working on this particular program and then backfill with a, with a staff member. That's one possibility. We could do a posting, create a job description, do a posting and put some qualifications that we're looking for in this and then open it up to anyone that would be qualified for it. It just depends on interest area. There might be somebody in the district that might be interested in our, so we'll have to just see which way, which way it goes.
Does that make any questions for me?
Do the teachers seem receptive to it?
We actually haven't talked that much to the teachers about it yet because we wanted to just get the opinions of everyone here first. And we had talked to a few teachers, leaders are, are on board. They really like it. We even had the counselors, they went and visited the program. There are still some scheduled things that we would need to look at and try to figure out and that, at the end of the day, that's, it would have to come down to, you know, how can we get a study hall for our ninth graders? How can we make sure that, because really we want our ninth graders, obviously seventh and eighth graders will have the opportunity, but ninth graders, we want to hit them early. So we're, we're trying to make more opportunities for those who have, are struggling to have a study hall. So it's, we're trying to like figure things out.
So it doesn't necessarily have to be their teacher, it could be any science teacher.
Correct, any science teacher, any, any science teacher, any English teacher, any math, any social studies teacher.
I was just curious, do you find the timing, if it's like a planning period or?
No, it's a, so currently our, our high school and middle school teachers have six teaching periods, but not all of them have six teaching periods based upon numbers of students and things like that. So a teacher that has five teaching periods, we rate AIS the teaching period right now, they currently have.
I got you.
And if there's any kids available in study hall at that period, we would shift the kids to that, to that classroom. So the only difference is there'll be difference in location. Instead of the kids coming, we're gonna go down to the, to the learning center, which will be a little bit of an adjustment, but at the same token, we're trying to continue to move forward, just helping our students academically.
You have a spot, or it's like where are you with?
No, I do. We have a couple of ideas, but again, just to kind of, you know, what, what happened to your, you know, just chipping things around.
Does Mr. Carter have to move on in his office?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Go back to the house.
I have a quick question, by the way. Just to be clear about kind of the differences between this arrangement and the arrangement that currently exists at the middle school level. Because that seems to be the kind of closest parallel, if you want my understanding correct. Whereas in the traditional kind of AIS setup, you have students who are assigned going to teachers.
Yes.
This would incorporate that element, they'd be going to a central location, but this would also be available to other students if they needed help?
Yes, yes. So the idea also is for students who would like a quiet environment or, you know, it doesn't always just have to be for students who are, who are assigned because of.
Okay, great.
Weakness. It could also be, it could be any student that wants to go. At the Luport Center, they had regents review, they had, you know, for students who really just wanted to come and practice their chemistry, you know, like.
So they actually have like organized sessions in that?
They had, there were times available to come in and students would come and work as a group. Yeah, so that, that's the kind of, you know, we're trying to get the kids to be a little bit more independent and to be more responsible for, okay, hey, let's get together and work. I got a study for this, or let's do this together. And maybe with the teacher's help, they can figure out and pinpoint some of those things, have it more facilitated that way instead of being forced to do something, so.
Very cool. And then one logistic question for either you or Superintendent Aaron, from staffing standpoint, this requires an official position or just shut one around?
So the position's currently in the budget.
Okay.
It could be rehired as a director of this position or someone may be interested in it, and if they're interested in it, they can shift to it.
Okay.
And we would have the backfill that position.
So it's just a.
It is currently in the budget.
Yes.
All right, very good. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Emma? I have a question.
Yes?
Is there like one room for seventh and eighth grade and then one room for ninth and up there?
It would be a lot of room, yeah.
And then do the kids who are assigned AIS get like, not like priority, but like do they get help if the kids want to just come in or like if they have a quick question or something like that?
Great question. So like the idea is there's always going to be more than one teacher in the room at a time. So the students that are there that have the AIS, that are assigned there, that would be the director's priority first or however they plan of it. If it's, you know, let's say that a math teacher is there that time and the students need help with math and the director's like, you know, could you take the lead on this? And then I'll help whoever comes in. That would be how it works. I have it figured out with our current schedule, we could have up to four teachers in math at one time, which would be really nice and a variety. So it's not to say it's gonna happen next year, depending on how the schedule pans out and where the teachers are assigned and who's taking more courses, but that's the idea, is to have multiple teachers that help over in that time. Is that all? Okay.
Any other question, board members?
Any ideas that this would be available all day and, talk period?
Yes, all day and talk period.
I'm gonna put Superintendent Carter in this flap up. What's your, what's your feelings on this, sir? Well, since I was the one that sent him to Luport to go take a look at it, you can pretty much guarantee that if it's, if I go at the board meeting, I'll have absolutely a favor. I think that, you know, one of the things we've struggled with specifically in the high school is having AIS as a place. So we've been, it happens in every district, you're basically hatching and hoping that this kid's gonna have an open period at the same time as that math teacher has an open period. Chances of that happening to the five, to all five kids who need math AIS is almost impossible. You may get two, you may get a three. But if you have a location for them to go, the student's gonna get academic intervention from someone that has competency in math, competency in science, plus there's gonna be other people that are gonna be in that room also to be able to add to that question. You know, this, when you're struggling in, in math, you may also struggle with science. And there's a good chance we'll be able to have both in that room at the same time. So I, I think it's a win for this.
Sorry. Thank you.
Yep.
So board members, you're probably gonna see in the next board meeting, the creation of that director's program, because that'll give us, creation of that director's position, because that'll give you the ability then to reach out to the teachers association, go through the next steps on what we're gonna do, if it's gonna be a hiring or if it's gonna be a teacher on specials. All right? Okay. We have one more presentation. Is this a record? It's close.
Hopefully we don't bore you.
No, and, and believe me, I could have put five policies on to talk to, so they would all listen to you. So I'm gonna let them introduce themselves, but the topic is the Wilson Solar Eclipse Project, and they wanted to just talk about it and possibly how we can assist.
Okay, I'm Jill Roaring, seventy-nine, that's the seventy-nine, biggest class at school ever graduated. Well, it was crowded. Steve is nineteen-seventy-two, Steve Smith, he's the originator of the Star Search Program, it's the publicisk program, the big one here, it's count. Gary Darnell is hiding over there. Village trustee. He's helping us out on this for my birthday.
Class of nineteen eighty.
Class of nineteen eighty, yeah. I'm sure you all know that there is an eclipse coming. And this is a one that likes to advance for a building. Definitely for Western New York. And. So we are doing the normal program that we gave, Wilson Star Search, that gave you on the fire, I'm happy. And Steve has been doing this for, this will be year fourteen.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, fifteenth year, which it would have been seventeen if COVID hadn't happened. But he takes his telescope down to the Kruger Park, so all the people hopefully show up with them, if the weather's clear.
I have another problem with the Buffalo Astronomical Association, like it's a, I told them, they got all the help with this program.
And they get telescopes out and they get sun. And I just kind of stand back and watch. So we are doing the Wilson Solar Search. We combined Wilson Star Search with the eclipse and that's what we got. So to give a background on this. August twelfth of two thousand seventeen, there was a partial eclipse here. And those are the pictures from down the park that day. And it's kind of hard to tell, but there was a massive amount of people there. They were.
A lot of people waiting, looked through my telescope.
Well, that's a little, we've got a little better than other picture, in that slide. And we were just amazed. You wanna, wanna point out the line or I know where the line was? Okay. The line started with the guy with the blue shirt there. The line went into the tent, across the tent, and way over into the parking lot. Just to look through Steve's telescope. And we figured there was about four hundred people there. People showed up early, they were all set to have picnics and all sorts of things, which I don't think that's gonna happen, believe it, but you never know, maybe we'll have another four day like today or something. So we got that. Next one. Okay, do a couple of clicks. Get back to, now I actually took that picture with my cellphone through Steve's telescope. And like I said, we had about four hundred people there. We only had seventy-two percent coverage, which means the moon, the moon did not cover the sun all the way. Which is the big thing about the central line, which is what we're doing here this year.
Would be right in the path of the satellite.
Yes.
That'd get you touch.
And because of that, the only people who really attended here that day were people from Western New York. Anybody who's a real serious astronomer is gonna go ahead for central line someplace. That's just the way they are. There are some very little fish people when it comes to lunar. Yes, there's, well, you don't do the traveling.
Over the world, you get, that allows you to pull the flip.
We know one person who actually has taken cruises to the, solar cruises, similar to the, felt the airlines flight that could happen. Next one, Jennifer. So that is the path of the eclipse, which you probably have seen already. The central line is where it's the longest for the length of time that it gets dark. Doesn't get dark like it is outside right now.
The dusk.
The dusk. Enough that we can be able to see stars in the sky, and planets in the sky at that point. I've got the times there for when things actually happen. Fortunately, you guys had closed school that day. That makes it much easier. Okay. And, I'm gonna give it another click. There is a great American eclipse website and a New York path page, Niagara Falls is the only location highlighted. We're close to it, but they didn't even highlight Buffalo. Buffalo is very active on this, but again, there's Niagara Falls, they're expecting. But we're hoping to grab some of the people that don't want to deal with the crowds in Niagara Falls. They're, they're expecting it to be pretty, very crowded. We know the hotel rooms, I don't know if anybody has seen the articles about the hotel rooms.
But I know Luport's Parker and Fort Niagara and they're doing something.
Yeah, Fort Niagara is doing something, yeah. So, next one, Jennifer. So what we're working on is planning for our guest, what they need housing, well, we can't really do much about that, if they're on their own there. Food, entertainment, the, they're expecting people to be here from Friday until Tuesday as far as, at the weekend's day. And next one. Housing, the campgrounds are opening up early. Rentals and hotels have all been booked solid. We're still trying to convince some of our Cecil Restaurants to open, doesn't look good. Right? Right, Gary, we haven't heard any?
Actually, Woodcock Brothers will be open and I believe Burns will be open as well, so I'm not sure exactly what the hours are, but they are looking to open for that day.
Which normally they are open on Mondays, so that's. We are, we have opened up too. St. John's Church is gonna be having a food booth. The Little League is gonna be doing some other stuff and consultation with St. John's, so they don't cross over. But there's room for other organizations, depending on school groups that like to do something. We are planning, as far as entertainment, we're hoping to get a little bit more activities going for people while they're down there. Because this is a two and a half hour thing, but it's, you know, you just gotta sit down for a lot of time. We ourselves, we have three telescopes available, at least if we're planning. We've ordered solar shields for the other two that we didn't have them for. I've never operated the telescope with Steve, he's gonna teach me. And we're gonna need somebody else to help us too.
I've worked on that, I mean, quote unquote.
Yeah, well, maybe we can get somebody else. And so that's that. Health and safety, Gary's been working on that stuff mostly. The county has been having major things to deal with that.
Correct. The County Emergency Services Director, Jonathan Schultz, has been working diligently with the Sheriff's Department and all the, all the company emergency services providers, buyer companies, heavy load services in that to coordinate the influx of visitors, the estimated influx of visitors to the Niagara region. Like Jill said, the Niagara Falls area has been targeted as the best place to view the eclipse because of the natural beauty of the falls and everything else. However, National Geographic, which has also provided a, a article on it, has offered the other side of that, is saying while, while Niagara Falls offers that ability to have a great view, you may want to go somewhere where there's less light and, you know, out near the lake. So like Superintendent Carter did mention, Fort Niagara is offering something going on there. But what we also found out was the Discover Niagara Shuttle, which runs between basically Four Mile Creek Park and the fort in Niagara Falls, will be offering shuttle service. So we're hoping to gain a little bit of that if we can get on board with Discover Niagara Shuttle as well. We're right down the lake from, from Fort Niagara, so if we can get onto that, some end with that's what we're looking to do here in the village, trying to increase some traffic in the village and bring people that have never been here to learn our great village, great community.
And some of these other locations, we won't be able to tell if we're available. You know, it's just certainly observing this. Nice. We are selling eclipse glasses, so we.
I don't know if that's around now, it's what you should sell.
Yeah, we're, we're doing it here as well. Yeah, I'll kind of notice the weather, you know. We don't know what's gonna happen there, but one of the things we are planning on doing is we're gonna be putting up a giant screen, probably about the size of that one, wouldn't you say, Gary?
Pretty close.
Yeah. And we can get a feed from NASA of the eclipse happening someplace. So we'll be doing that. And they, but they're like Ontario, it's, it's not a fire, this is lots, so that's.
So I assume you're, we're talking about village parking, things like that? Are you looking to use our lots?
Correct. Superintendent, we were, we would like the ability to use your lots as long as they're gonna be closed that day for any possible overflow parking. It is also our intent to, we are going to hire a, a small bus, a shuttle bus, to be utilized to take people down to the park and, and probably come around to the, and make the circle around the village as well, coming back to the parking lot, not just down and back, just around, coming back to it.
Even a quick little tour of the village.
Kind of, again, the possibility is there, you know, a large, a large number of people. And like Jill said, we're not, there's no, there's no. And like Jill said, we're not, there's no, there's no guarantee of that, but, um, we need, we need a plan for it as well, something.
Yeah, as for the, the, the parking, um, we've offered our parking lot to historical society for their events. It's, it's a matter of, I mean, uh, for bond, we didn't know if we could apply a facility use form. Yeah, as for the, the lot and then our part of the, we have done a little bit of our parking itself. So it's a, we can go to our march board meeting for approval. I don't think that's a problem. They've offered that service to the community.
Thank you.
And so, sorry, there's, that's the way to use of the cloud cover. Not looking real good for relief, but.
It's also an alimony year, so they, they're talking about, you know, to help, uh, help that possibility of clear skies.
We get, we get clear sky, ouch. And cloudy and smog out of our Star Search last year poorly. So hopefully. Yeah. The other one thing is, I don't know if it's too late, but if any of the teachers or the school organizations, like in high school, would like to set up some sort of educational thing, I've got a couple of books.
Okay.
Come from NASA and stuff that have got all kinds of ideas for activities.
You could certainly leave that with Mrs. Ivan, or if you want to put an email together, I'll, I can certainly send it out to any of your staff member.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much.
I'm all for it. I think we lost a couple of libraries about safely launching the eclipse, so that's available to you.
Okay. And, uh, we can certainly also offer, if you have this flyer in a digital form.
Yes.
We can put it on our front sign.
Okay. All right. I can send it to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item three personnel appointments, three A. Jessica Dowell is a point O F D E long-term substitute middle school teacher, science teacher, per the W T A agreement effective retroactively from February twentieth, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Substitute teacher is meant to be here to state fingerprint clearance data motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry.
The next eclipse.
Three B. Zach Anshaw is J D Tech baseball coach for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four spring season for the W T A. So, second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Item four A, student teacher, clothing lady from Niagara University will be student teaching at the elementary school with Melanie Hirschman, fourth grade teacher from March eleventh, twenty twenty-four through May first, twenty twenty-four. Fingerprints have been cleared by the here State of Education Department. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Item four B. Sydney Kranga, a student enrolled in St. Onofre University, complete fifteen classroom observation hours with Rebecca Wyer, special education teacher during the spring semester, as scheduled by Scott Ben, middle school principal. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Item C, approve the obsolescence and disposal of three elliptical machines. These are beyond their useful life, deemed outdated and beyond repair. Disposal would be done in environmentally and socially responsible manner. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry.
No. I'll see.
Item six, conference requests. Dana Creavish requests to attend, to attend the school librarians at the forefront of A I Revolution Conference on April tenth, twenty twenty-four in Massett, New York, with the cost of my alleged substitute being considered as a proper charge against the district. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Item eight, field trips action required. Eight A, approve field trip request B through C per the February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four agenda. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Yep. Thank you. Item seven, use of facilities request. The town of Wilson requests use of elementary school gym classrooms and play fields from July first, twenty twenty-four through August sixteen, twenty twenty-four, through nine A M to three P M for the summer recreational program. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. No action on, uh, field trips. And number ten, uh, no reports for those. Emma, you have a report?
Um, the, our wrestling team, this, the, uh, the boys' basketball, all in girls' basketball, they will form their first playoffs. There's a new play called Opening. And our sports start marching off the first three sports.
Okay, thank you. Superintendent Carter, do you have a report?
Yes, thank you for all of the lenders tonight. I know it was quite a few, uh, presentations we all had to sit through, but I think it's important to, uh, go through them at this time. Uh, just going to echo what Emma said, Emma said we had a good winter season. Congratulations to all of our sports teams. Our girls' basketball team is playing tomorrow night, um, in the second playoff game. We had three wrestlers go to state. Jacob Stevenson plays second at states. Willie Worketter plays second at states and Hans America plays third at the state. So congratulations to those gentlemen and our, uh, boys and girls' basketball team for doing great and our girls' and our cheerleading team. I think, uh, wrestling is all about the winter sports. This coming month, uh, Friday and Saturday, I think I'm off a week. We're hosting, yes, this coming Friday and Saturday, we are hosting the all county at Niagara Community College. So I will be there on, um, on Sunday, or excuse me, Saturday, Friday, Saturday, I'll be there Saturday introducing, uh, the, uh, the program. Looking forward to seeing all of our students. And I didn't write the date down, I should have, but, uh, superintendent's conference day is, uh, February eighth, it's a Friday. And then, uh, as, uh, Emma said, most, almost main is the drama production. It's going to be Friday, uh, March eighth. I said February eighth. The superintendent's conference day is March, February eighth is over. Almost main is March eighth and March ninth, Saturday, both performances begin at seven o'clock.
Thank you, Superintendent Herg. Um, just quickly, again, thank you for all the presentations tonight. Uh, thank you, Steve, Jill, and Gary for coming out tonight and presenting on behalf of, uh, Star Search and Solar Search. And anything that you need, please let us know. This time, uh, these guidelines for public agenda. This portion of the agenda provides an opportunity for residents of the Wilson School District to be heard. Any person who wishes to address the board is invited to do so at this time. Please state your name and address. Complaints or criticisms about individual school personnel are not appropriate in this form and they will not be allowed. Board may not respond to questions. We should be referred to the superintendent of schools at another time. Please be respectful and limit your comment to three minutes. Anybody wishing to come forward? Okay. Here it none, uh, I'll undertake a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry.